Let me turn this on. We now call to order the Culpeper County Planning Commission meeting for September. We welcome you all here. Those who didn't know, Sunday was National Grandparents' Day, so we'd like to celebrate all of our grandparents, and not only because I'm one, but it is many who set the foundation and helps build that foundation for all of us. So, to all those who are watching, Happy Grandparents' Day. I do want to take this time before we move into our agenda. One thing that I want to share is that there have been many applications that have come before us, and those applications are involving REC. And as many know, that I am a director for REC. And I just wanted to, I had explained this or shared this one time, and I'd like to share this again, that one of the, well, there have been some concerns about issues that come up, and with me being a director for REC, and that there, where does that lie? And I just want to share with all of you here, and those who are watching via the TV also, that one thing that I shared is that I consistently attempt to have the highest of morals in everything that I do, especially in being a pastor, a father, you know, setting example for others. I also have shared that from an ethical standpoint, that anything that I do, I want to make sure that we are doing it with the utmost of ethics. And when it comes to these applications, and we've heard, I've heard many applications, I've been here now, you know, 23, 24 years, and understand the importance of responding to anything, and making sure that we are doing it in a way that when I go home, I can lay my head on the pillow and feel that I've done the best for my community, and that we all love, and that's Culpeper County. I have watched these different applications progress, and I want to just share these things with you. One, from an ethical standpoint, as a board of director, and not brought forward by anyone else but the board itself, have placed on ourselves that if we are on, if we run for any political office, that once we are successful in that office, that we cannot be a director on the board. So, that's one thing for sure, is that if you're making that final decision, you are definitely not on the board. That's definitely would be considered a conflict. But other than that, where I stand, and where I sit, and all of us here, we are advisors to the board of supervisors who make the final decisions on everything that comes before us. And with that being said, when it comes to Rappahannock Electric, that all that I am doing when it comes to a commissioner, is to gather the information, look at the information, listen to, from a public hearing standpoint, the citizens, and then take that information, and decipher it, and then send it forward based on a vote of confidence, a majority vote, to the board, advising them that it fits into our zoning or our comprehensive plan. And that's the whole purpose. I am appointed and not elected by the county. So, that's the, throws me into that position. So, when you take it just one step further, anyone who comes in with an application who's going to be needing, going to need electric, need power, they're going to use Dominion or Rappahannock Electric. So, while I'm sitting here, everyone who comes up with an application to this commission is in some way going to be connected to Rappahannock Electric. But it is the fiduciary duty of Rappahannock Electric to provide electric, to provide power to anyone who falls into our territory. That's required. You know, we have no say in it. You know, SEC, you know, monitors it, and that is a decision that is made there. So, it's not, we have to give power. Can't have a vote to say, well, no, they don't deserve power, or we can't give them power because it's this or that. No, that is there. And I kind of close it with this. Each of us who sit here, who are members of Rappahannock Electric, who is a nonprofit organization and not-for-profit organization, has an interest in Rappahannock Electric. We are members, and all of us, anyone who has power with Rappahannock Electric is a member. You're an owner when it comes to that, okay? So, it could be looked at in a lot of different ways. But I just wanted to be able to share those three points with you. First, to be able to do this, you have to have high morals. You have to understand that you are here to do what is best for this community, and how, by advising the board, whether or not it fits into the guidelines that it has set, not me, not any of us, but what it has set. And I do feel that we take much precaution in making sure that we do just that. And so, if there's, you know, any questions or, you know, further questions in reference to that, I, you know, just encourage you to ask, and just to make sure that you understand. But those three things, I just wanted you to understand, when it comes to a moral perspective, when it comes to a fiduciary perspective, and advisory perspective. All three of those come in together to, to the reason that I can still, you know, sit here and make sure that I do everything I possibly can, that is in the best interest of Culpeper County. So, in saying that, it's not a question-and-answer session, but something that I felt like, again, it was time to share that, so that everybody would understand the direction that we headed. All right? Okay. Now, we move one step further into our agenda. The first is approval of the agenda that we have here this evening, is there, we've received, did the chair entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The agenda has been accepted, as is, as presented. Second, we have the approval of the minutes from our August the 9th meeting, and we received those in our packet and board pack. There, any concerns about the minutes? We just need a motion to put it in the records.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It will be, our minutes from the August 9th meeting will be put into our records. Now, we move into the fun part, which is our new business, and we turn it over to Mr. Drumheller at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case Z459-23-1. It's a request by CLO Digital Infrastructure LLC by Robert Book to rezone 120.85 acres from RA, rural area, to LI, light industrial. The applicant is proposing to use the property for a data center campus per Article 7, 1A-2-2.5, which includes an area for an electrical substation and associated equipment. The property is located along 1529 James Madison Highway in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 41, parcel 107, 109, 110, and 110A. The planning commission will consider, review, and make findings whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed substation are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, Section 15.2-2232. The planning commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the board of supervisors as to the approval or disapproval of the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm just going to give a brief background of the application that you're looking at tonight. We do have a presentation by the applicant for this rezoning request as well, so I don't want to take up too much time or explain things that they'll go over as well. But like other rezoning applications that the planning commission has seen recently, we provided the planning commission with a package for review. It included not only the applicant's application and material, but a staff report, as well as a combined agency review from VDOTs on Water Conservation District Emergency Services in this case as well. Mr. Chairman, on the screen highlights the parcel in red, parcels in red, that are seeking to be rezoned to light industrial. There is some other light industrial nearby. You see on the purple that's on the screen is light industrial. But for the time being, most, the majority of the areas has been and is zoned currently RA, which is our rural area designation. Just a few things to point out before I get into any details from the staff analysis. One is the project location, Route 29. 1529 is right here. You have the interchange at Route 666 and 29, and then this is Knolls Mill Road, or 667, and then Kaiser Road, which goes into McDevitt right here. Town wastewater facility property is right here. Just to kind of give you an idea of where this property is located. This kind of pans out a little bit, but this is a big reason why the applicant is here tonight, I believe. This is, on the screen, you see the McDevitt, what is known as the McDevitt Drive Technology Zone. This is their technology zones that the board has established several years ago now to incentivize certain types of technology-based businesses. And all the area that you see highlighted in the turquoise color there on the screen is that existing tech zone. And highlighted in red is CLO's property that they're seeking to rezone to industrial. Industrial zoning would be required for data center activity. This may help some of you, may confuse others when you look at area imagery. But in general, again, the parcel highlighted in red, you can see today and has been for many years, open pasture land that's adjacent to Route 29 that is seeking to be rezoned tonight. The reason why I wanted to point this out is twofold, just to kind of give the area character, and to show a couple other features of the area. The blue line represents floodplain. The applicant does propose to stay out of that, obviously, with their infrastructure, building infrastructure, planned infrastructure. But I wanted to point out a couple other features that kind of set the stage of why this has been chosen as a technology zone. This is Equinex and TerraMark today. That's a data center that's been in existence for a number of years. You have the new Sea-Tech School, Culpeper Technology Education Center, right here. As I mentioned before, the town wastewater facility is right here. Swift has been a mainstay in Culpeper County for a number of years, is right here, type of data center as well. We've also had recent activity. As the planning commissioner will remember, this particular property, all highlighted right here along Frank Turney's Drive, which goes to Jermana Technology Center, or Jermana Community College, is slated for data centers as well. And then more recently, the town Culpeper has zoned this piece of property here, as well as right here, I believe as of last night, for additional data center activity. And just to go back to the screen, this is why the applicant is here before us tonight. That being said, this particular piece kind of finishes out the existing McDevitt Drive Technology Zone, if it were to be rezoned and moved forward. Staff did look at the application as it came in. Ms. Chairman, there were a number of comments that VDOT submitted. The applicant has had a chance to respond to those. Most of VDOT's comments that were in the staff report and in their letter would be addressed at the site plan stage if the rezoning were to be successful, as well as the Culpeper Stormwater District's comments as well. The applicant has considered each of those comments, and has addressed them, in staff's opinion adequately in their response. We did have the opportunity to forward this to our Culpeper County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association, and they did lend some very helpful comments as well for this particular application. And those were relayed in the staff report as well. And the applicant can't answer those all upfront. They did the best they could with some of the questions. Some of those would need to be acted on later if the application were to be successful. In the staff report, you see a planning synopsis, and I've gone through a few other areas that I focused on already. The comprehensive plan not only shows this area as a tech zone, but also shows it as industrial in the future land use plan. It is shown as an urban services area where we have water and sewer services close by. So, there are a number of things that are supportive of this rezoning that you find in your, actually, brand-new 2023 comprehensive plan. From the transportation side of things, Route 667 would be the primary corridor, or would be the only corridor that would have access for this project. The applicant proposes two entrances, one primary entrance, and then one secondary emergency access along Route 667. From a water and sewer standpoint, the applicant did field comments to that degree, and did provide, in their latest package, a preliminary concept layout of how they could get water and sewer access to the property. The applicant addressed many of staff's comments. When it comes to utilities, that's been a big, big part of any discussion lately with data centers. The applicant does propose upwards of, I believe, a couple million square feet of data center potential. And I believe they have in their application up to 240 megawatt proposed proposal as far as power needs or demand for their proposal there. I don't have that on the screen now, but you can go back to the, if I can go back to the aerial real quick. There are some upgrades that are in the works currently, as far as power needs for the area in general. And it's in response to general growth, but also data center growth that we're seeing in and around the town. That would be an expansion of an existing substation. This is an REC substation today. This would be expanded, and that site plan is actually in works now to basically triple the size of that substation. There would be additional substations involved potentially with the project here, Culpeper Technology Park, the Peterson Company property, as well as Copper Ridge as well. The applicant, as was mentioned, when Neil read, does propose a substation for their project as well. And it's about where my red dot is, or they have conceptually planned right now. In staff's opinion, that's probably the best spot on this property. It would be less visible than where they show their buildings, potential buildings today, and would be closer to the existing electric network as well that's already there. Ms. Chairman, the commission has really two findings. It's rather unique. These, we can't seem to get away from these types of uses lately. And I mean that in a good and bad way, but there's two parts. When you're looking at electrical infrastructure or any type of utility, we do show in the comp plan the expansion of the existing substation, and an expansion of a lines, transmission line that goes across Route 3 to the existing substation, and that is in the works today. We don't show planned substation on this property. So, in that regard, the planning commission is charged to make a substantial court of finding in your comprehensive plan that it's in substantial accord with the use and with the finding that it's an okay area, basically, for a substation. The other finding that the planning commission is more used to is just a general recommendation, whether it fits the comprehensive plan as far as the future land use, whether you think the area character supports the applicant's request. And that's just a general recommendation for the rezoning itself. Ms. Chairman, I'm going to stop talking. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff is largely supportive of the request. We have asked them questions. The applicant has done a good job, mostly to try to answer, mainly regarding emergency service and power needs. And they may go into that a little bit more tonight in their application. Happy to answer your questions. Robert Book and Michael Shaw with CLO are here to present as well, and can answer questions as well.
Okay, all right.
Let's ask a couple of staff.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sam and Neil, for your all's reports. And at this time, before we move to the applicant, we will ask the commission, do you have any questions for the staff right now? And we'll take a couple on that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sam, there are several spots in the staff packet that mentions the Armstrong property across Knolls Mill Road from this project, and there being the need to do some coordination, deconfliction, possibly with the entrance into that development and this. And I think that's something we haven't seen before. I wonder if you might could provide some general details of what that project is.
Sure. Commissioner, Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Price, yeah, we do have an application that staff is currently reviewing, a subsequent, another rezoning application, much different in character and complexity than what we're looking at tonight. It is for a rezoning of the property, and it's not going to, the entire property is not shown on this screen, but it's just, just to the north, on the other side of 667, from what you're looking at tonight. And that is a rezoning, it's a mixed rezoning request to R3 and light industrial, a little bit of light industrial, primarily R3, which is a residential project, and some mix of singles and townhomes that we're looking at. Staff is heavy into review of that application. These applications came in roughly about the same time. The complexity of the Armstrong property rezoning is a little bit more in-depth, and we're working through that now. Coordination, as far as, there's many different levels of coordination that could possibly happen if both properties were to be rezoned and move forward with some type of development, but entrances would be one of them. That was a comment that VDOT did make. And I think that the current applicant that we have tonight is certainly willing to do that, and there's adequate road furniture to make that happen. There would always be coordination of utilities as well, and how those play in right now would be probably too early to tell on that. So.
All right. Thanks, Sam. One more thing. In the staff report, it also mentions that when site plan review begins, the architectural review standards have to be applied, as will entrance corridor standards. So, is that likely to change substantially the layout of the site that the applicant's already provided in terms of where the buildings are and how they're ready?
I'll let the applicant answer that as well. But yes, to answer your first part of that question, they are required under Article 30 of the zoning ordinance, not only because they're on Route 29, 1529, but also because they're in a tech zone. And that, by default, requires them to submit architectural design, conceptual drawings underneath those guidelines. And that is typically done with the site plan phase, as you mentioned. But they would be required to do that, and the applicant's aware of that. And they've provided some schematic drawings that show conceptually of what the buildings could look like. And so far, from what we've seen from those drawings, those would largely fit within the guidelines that we have today. But that would need to be further refined with landscaping plans, layout, a final layout, and then, of course, the renderings themselves.
And a process question to follow up with that. So, if the rezoning is approved, the site plan review would be done at the staff level? It wouldn't be come back to us?
That's correct. So, any industrial site plan, if the use is industrial, it's comp plan for industrial, and then the site plan is in accordance with that, that is reviewed administratively, yes.
Okay. And then I just got one last thing. Water usage, they'll be on town waters, so shouldn't we have a letter from the town attesting that they can support the requirement?
Yeah. And I don't know if we do or don't have that, that letter on the moment. But the town has stated recently that they could serve, adequately serve with their capacity, current capacity, this type of project. So, from a normal usage, not from a cooling standpoint, and the applicant's not proposing to use water cooling, but air cooling, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else?
So, just as a staff question, can you tell me how we're going to delineate between the REC supply line and the Dominion supply for this project? It seems to me almost like they're the same entity. REC is saying that they can supply enough, but they get their power from Dominion. But Dominion's not really committed in this packet that I can see.
No, but Dominion brings in the transmission to this area.
To the area. So, I want to make sure, though, that Armstrongs have enough left for them, if we're going to go in the technology zone and use up everything Dominion can supply.
Yeah. And each of those applicants, whether it's a rezoning for, you know, residential or data center, which is going to use a lot more, from what we know today, have to make their request to those power entities and work through those separately. I couldn't tell you, I don't have the knowledge. The applicant may, that they definitely are working on that. They could probably answer your question better than I. But my understanding is that Dominion brings the transmission, that you have the main Remington-Gordonsville line in the Stevensburg area, but we do have a transmission trunk line that comes off of that, and then rolls west along Route 3, and then across Route 29.
Yeah. Is that being upgraded?
Yes.
And it's being upgraded for which project?
It's being upgraded, I don't know that it's for a specific project, but a conglomeration of projects. But what precipitated the need, probably the closest need, would be the Cloud HQ data center project. And Dominion stated that last week at the board level.
So, they, oh, so Dominion's come to Culpeper County?
They did last week.
Talk to us.
They did last week, yes.
And did they give you reassurance that if we do another one, or another one, or another one? I mean, how, where's the end game for it?
That's, no, it's a great question. And to answer the question directly, no, they didn't give a sound assurance that what this upgrade would service everything that's needed. They gave assurance that it would serve what they know about today.
Last week, you mean?
Yes.
Do they know about this?
They, I believe they do. So.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Sam, you talked about the utility upgrades that are planned and so forth, and you talked about that transmission line that's going to go across there. Will that transmission line be within the current right-of-way or an additional right-of-way?
The planned improvements that Dominion is working on today for that transmission line will fall within the existing right-of-way. Anything beyond that, Dominion hasn't really opened the door for that yet. So.
Anyone else?
Ms. Chairman, if I could, Sam, if, or staff, if we
Ms. Chairman, if I could, Sam, if, or staff, if we could pull up the map on page seven and go into a little bit detail on how much of that land, the one, when we're on that map, you said we can't see it on that map, but if you go to document two in our, in our docs that you sent, on page seven, it shows a broader map. Can you expand on how much of that is being rezoned, or is it all of it?
Yeah. Are you talking about the tech zone area, or are you talking about the?
Um, I got page seven on, yes.
So, and you're, are you talking, Commissioner Clancy, are you talking about the, just the applicant's property, or are you?
No, no, the one that you were saying that was in the works to be rezoned as well for mixed.
Armstrong.
That, that is Armstrong? What was north? What was?
Yeah, that's, that's this property right here, and then it goes off the screen.
Yeah, that's what I was saying on page two. It just, because that looks like a little sliver, and then when you open it up on, in document two, that was named two in, in the email that we got.
I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding what document you're talking about right now.
Okay. When you log into, yeah, anyways.
Yeah, that's a little bit, it gets a little bit better, so it shows a little bit more of the parcel. What's in is the Armstrong family property is, is.
No, it's, well, I don't know if I could.
Document two, it's in, in today's board doc. We don't have that prepared to put up on the screens. Oh, Roger. Yes.
But that's across the street?
Yes, it's across the street. It's this piece right here, Commissioner Clancy.
Mine's super blurry. I don't know why.
Yeah, and actually, it's this piece as well, but this, this, this is the large piece, and it goes up to the railroad tracks and then has road furniture on Bragg's Corner Road as well as Nals.
So that is going to be, potentially, could be residential.
We're reviewing it right now, yeah.
And any buffering on that? For future, I know we can't plan on.
Yeah, yeah, the applicant has committed to doing buffering along Nals Mill. Of course, you would have the road separated, the uses there, but they're, they're proposing a landscape berm along, along their furniture, the property, to not only push it back off of Nals Mill because we show some potential road improvements in the future, and the applicant has responded to that comment and has pushed their infrastructure back off the road as much as they can, but they have put in a landscape buffering as well.
Okay. And the final question I have is, in the water, the floodplain, and there's a creek there as well, right, that separates that, are we buffering off of the property line or the creek line?
Yeah, they would need to, and the applicant's concept plan kind of shows that too, and the site plan hopefully would be, you know, very similar to that in the future, but they do show, the substation area would be the closest probably infrastructure to that area, but they do show, you know, potential stormwater facilities in that part, but then stay entirely out of the designated 1% annual chance floodplain there. And that's just, that's, tree line is probably what you're talking about as a.
Yeah.
Streamline there, the creek line right there, yeah. So they, they're stay entirely out.
So they're, they're back far enough. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Go ahead.
So where is the town well on this, is it on this track?
No.
All right. It's on the Fink's track, on the track that we're putting the 55-plus housing on.
The, the town did acquire three different well sites actually on that property. That's for.
And that's where they're going to use that, some of that to service this for water.
I wouldn't be able to answer that. That would be a public works question. I mean, that, that's just part of their water supply. The town does have adequate water supply to certain.
They say they do, all right. Well, last month, that guy's well was running dry and was next to one of those wells.
Yeah, it's not necessarily in conjunction with that, but we are working on that too, so.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Chairman, I have just a quick follow-up. On the electrical question, Sam, in the case study, it mentions that the staff had two primaries concerned, and one of them was the electrical supply to this, and included the statement to be helpful to have additional information from the applicant and/or Dominion to evaluate this. So as I've heard you talk about upgrades and where lines are going to go and those sorts of things, it's, do you, do you have additional information that you didn't have a couple weeks ago when the case analysis? I mean, do you feel better about that now, or are you still thinking it'd be helpful to have more information?
No, I, I, Commissioner Price, I do not have any additional information. The only information that I have at the time is, is I do know that Dominion's actively working on upgrading that, that existing transmission line, and that we do, we have plans to upgrade that substation there that's currently off of Frank Turner's Drive.
Okay. All right. At this time, we're now going to ask if the applicant or representative for the applicant, you know, come forth and give you four names for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Book with Arroyo Investors.
Turn that on. Yeah, turn, turn it on. It's on, it's on. Go ahead. It's on there.
Okay. There we go. I love the sound of my own voice. Good evening. My name is Robert Book with Arroyo Investors. First, before I get into the presentation, just want to thank the people of Culpeper, first of all, for welcoming us into your, your town and your county. The people have been exceptionally welcoming, whether it's the barista at the local coffee shop, John and Connie who run the Time, Old Time Inn, you know, just the reception has been phenomenal, really appreciate the staff and all the work that they've done to guide us through this process and make it as simple as possible, and really appreciate you all as, you know, civic participants actively participating in your, in your local governance. I know it's not something that, you know, scratches everyone's itch, so we really appreciate you all making the time for us this evening. So Robert Book here with the Arroyo Investors. I'm going to get into who Arroyo is, who CLO is here in a second, but just wanted to give you sort of a brief overview of what we're going to talk about this evening. So I'll give you an overview of CLO. My colleague, Michael Shaw, will talk about why this site makes so much sense for data center and, you know, what it means for the county. I'm sure you've heard some more quotes before. We also have experts from the civil side and construction side who are going to talk about sort of our key considerations in development, many of which you've already raised, you know, want to be here available for you to ask questions. And then we'll, we'll close it out. I'll thank you guys again. We're going to keep doing that because, again, I can't say it enough, the, the county really has been great. So who, who is CLO? So CLO is a portfolio company of Arroyo Investors. Arroyo is a private equity firm that invests at the intersection of energy and infrastructure. Lately, we've been investing along the themes of the energy transition. I cut my teeth in power generation, particularly in PJM and CIRK. So I used to sell power to Smecca, Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative. Some of your questions, Commissioner Thornhill, happy to talk about the way the grid works at length, maybe not tonight, but over a cup of coffee sometime, would love to talk about it. I'm kind of nerdy about it. Part of what Arroyo does when it makes an investment is it engages local stakeholders. It's not just window dressing, it's, it's an active commitment. I'll give an example. I used to oversee a power plant in Gaffney, South Carolina, where the stacks were the tallest building in the area, and so we had fire and rescue do their high rescue training from that, from those stacks, and the confined spaces for the power generators were the tightest confined spaces, and so they did their confined space training and certifications there. I actually got to witness it. It's very cool. So that, you know, it's not just sponsoring baseball teams. CLO has already sponsored the Air Fest that's coming up next month. It's that type of engagement, but it's, it's more than that. We, we feel like we try to take a stake in our communities, and it's something that's important to us here, and it's something that we're considering in our development. With me tonight, I have Michael Shaw, who's the Director of Real Estate for CLO Digital Infrastructure, Ray Burkholder, who's our Head of Civil on this project, and Sean Connolly, who's a representative from our construction firm. Before I let them introduce themselves as they speak, want to talk a little bit about CLO's strategy and why it is unique from some of the other applicants that you may have heard. We start based on Arroyo's experience with a power-first lens. So we do power flow modeling, which is very similar to what the utilities do. The utilities do it from a generation perspective. Why is that? Well, for the last 100, 150 years, the grid has been about taking very dense power generations, usually historically large coal plants, large natural gas plants, that could serve millions of homes, and building a grid to distribute that to kilowatt-level consumers, watt-level consumers even, right? And so the grid is always planned from how do I get generation to load? Well, fast forward to the energy transition, now you have very disparate generation, whether that's solar plants or rooftop solar, community solar, it could be wind generation, it could be batteries, what have you, and you're decommissioning a lot of those legacy fossil fuel plants for virtuous reasons, not debating that, but it does strain the electric grid, it changes sort of the way electrons are flowing on the system. Now you suddenly also have the digital revolution, and you have the densest loads you've ever seen. It used to be a five-megawatt load was unheard of. Now we're talking about 300-megawatt campuses. Very different paradigm, and so the grid has to evolve to how is it going to serve these new loads within new supply stack? So CLO's entire thesis is that we believe we can use the angle of power flow analysis along with analysis of stakeholders to find value-added sites. Based on all of the attributes that Sam mentioned earlier, we believe that this site is a great fit. As we talk about design considerations, I'll come back more to the power side of things because I know it's of concern for you all. But with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Michael.
Yeah, so for the record, my name is Michael Shaw, Michael Myron Shaw for the full name, and I do appreciate Chairman Reeves' comments earlier about grandparents' day, et cetera. You know, I think we, we all need to stop and, you know, live our lives and pay attention to what we're doing, and so his comments were very, you know, timely for us, and I'm, I'm just going to echo on to what, as I introduce myself a little bit more, you know, what Robert was talking about, where the engagement in the community, you know, is something that we hold near and dear to ourselves. I was born and raised in a small town in Ohio, north central Ohio, it's primarily farming and manufacturing, and when I was growing up, there was a lot of manufacturing there, and then it kind of went away. We had bubble gum company, we had a bicycle company, we had a light bulb manufacturing, steel, AMF bowling, all the bowling equipment was manufactured in our town, and slowly they all closed and it became more agricultural. So when you come to a town like Culpeper with the agricultural history, you know, and I know everybody here wants to maintain that, you know, the vistas and the, and the way of life, and as the sprawl starts coming this way, you know, everybody doesn't like the change, and I knew as a kid growing up, and even going back to Ohio now, you know, it's, it's always good to go back home, and not much has changed, you know, where I grew up, but we're certainly happy to be here and be a part of the evolution and fulfillment of the comprehensive plan that you guys have laid out. And, you know, I've been in the data center space since late 98, so when people didn't really know what data centers were, still today, people don't know really what data centers are, but they obviously are higher profile. So I'm not going to read through all this stuff. You guys have all this stuff, but I think the main thing is, is that, as Robert said, you know, we're a little different in the way we approach things. The buildings that we're going to put up here are very attractive, they're state-of-the-art.
If I could get you to speak into that microphone a little bit more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry about that. I guess, I feel, maybe I'm too tall.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, so the, the, these rendering pictures are a little small. There were some comments around the renderings, but we take great pride in these, and just so you know, the, the, we go back to, or no, let me go up here. If we look at this slide here, so this slide was generated from an actual ALTA survey, so this is very precise, and it was put into a CAD file, which is, you know, what they make blueprints from and stuff. The, the facilities that you see here are actual facilities that are, are being deployed in Mesa, Arizona currently. So these are the exact, you know, this isn't like a guess, this is what the buildings look like, and this is what it would lay out like on the property, along with, you see some of the topographical there, and this land lays out fairly well now, but we will move some dirt. So if we go back to these renderings, so these, these are renderings, but they're very realistic, meaning it's, it's not a picture, but that's pretty much what it's going to look like. The colors could vary, we're open to, to input as we go through the process, but, and then you'll see that these, the berming of the, you know, as we mass grade, there'll be a lot of dirt that we push around, and that will get pushed up to the edge of the property and then create a natural berm, and then we will very densely landscape the entire property along, you know, the entry corridor, 2915, and then along Nals Mill, and then we have some, okay, here we go. And then, again, these are kind of small, but both of these pictures are westbound, so the one on the bottom, if you're driving west on Nals Mill Road, our property's to the left. If you're driving west on, on the highway there, our property is, is to the right. So that's kind of what, you know, we envision here. You know, state-of-the-art, you know, blend in, very, as disruptive, least disruptive as we can be to the community, to the surrounding community. We want to bring in, you know, not a lot of jobs, maybe 30 to 50 jobs, but very high-paying jobs, desired jobs. Even some of the people that live here now that are commuting up north possibly won't have to do that and can, can possibly work locally. So we've enjoyed working with all the different groups, you know, economic development, the different committees, along with, you know, junior parentements have been great, the fire departments have been great, echoing a lot of what Robert said, everybody here's been just super welcoming, and I'm going to pass it off now, unless you guys have some questions for me, or we can save that till later.
We will. We will save.
But I'm very honored to be able to stand in front of you guys and, and gals and, and talk to you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ray Burkholder. I'm with Ballser &amp; Associates. We're a planning, architectural, engineering firm located in Stanton, Virginia. We've got offices throughout the state, do a lot of work up and down the Shandover Valley, and again, I'll work at the same thing, have enjoyed working with Sam and his team here. They've, they've made this process very straightforward. So I'm going to get into a few specifics that have been brought up tonight. I can get into more if you all have questions, but I'm going to just try to hit the highlights here. Michael was just going through some of the aesthetics. I'm a landscape architect. I've got with me Bill Moore, he's a civil engineer, so we can get into, into real specifics if we need to, but looking at the buffer, we do have two different types of buffers that we're looking at. There's a lot of existing vegetation along Route 1529 now, so we want to keep that vegetation. It's nice and tall, so we've got, have a 30-foot preservation of that, and then we're adding to the backside of that additional evergreens. So that's what's happening on what we proposed. Obviously, that still has to go before the review committee for the entrance corridor and go through all the details of that, but that, that's in the proffers. In addition, on Nals Mill Road, we've got the berm that's been talked about with additional landscaping on top of that. In reference to the Armstrong property across the street, I've coordinated or started a conversation with the Boulder Engineering. They've, again, just through Sam, been able to connect with that firm, begin that conversation. They do have additional green spaces along Nals Mill Road, so the drainage is kind of coming that way, so that's where they're doing a lot of their stormwater management. So anyway, we'll, we'll obviously get into more with that later as that moves forward. Environmental, I'm going to go to the, I'm trying to figure out which way this thing's So I want to clear up one thing, so the property line to the south, which is plant, plant left, that's the stream. So the stream, the floodplain is pretty substantial area there, so that tree line we show is really the upper, almost the upper level of the floodplain. So any environmental concerns, stream buffering, that, that's all happening hundreds of feet away from, from the project, so we'll certainly be working with the, again, all the agencies with that. We do have a little stream over on the, on the northern side, that's, again, we've got buffering shown around that as well. As far as water and sewer, I have been able to begin conversations with both the town and the, and the environmental services with the county. We actually had a collective meeting with that. There is a well on our site. There is a well on our site. It's just, and I don't know if this is a, this is not a laser.
I think it is a, it is a laser.
Oh, there we go. So the well site is kind of right in here. Part of our utility strategy, again, Paul and Jim had really already worked this out, is to pull water, and again, they can, they've got a 12-inch line out here now. So there's plenty of water to service the project. It'll come down Nalls Mill Road and we'll go ahead and bring that line into the project and stop it short, you know, basically short of their well site. That'll allow them in the future, because they'll have to do some treatment here to then backfeed that line as more growth happens. So we're essentially creating the infrastructure and the backbone for them just to tie right into it and then backfeed back into the county and town. Does that make sense? So we're not going to use the, they don't need the water now. They don't, they don't need it for our project, but sometime in the future, they're anticipating needing that water. Your question?
It'll be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question now, can we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so since you're standing there, what is the phasing of that? Because there's a lot of under roof there and you got to, you got to get water and sewer and you got to get electric. And it says you're going to phase it, but it doesn't say.
Well, water and sewer have to happen in phase one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you're going to do one building in phase one, one in phase two?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Michael and Robert speak to that. This is many-a-year process, right? As, again, we've talked about the Dominion, as they upgrade their line, this is going to have to happen over time, many years, quite frankly, just to get equipment today.
How many? How many do you think?
I'll let Robert. It can take us two to three years just to get a transformer for a commercial project. That's, again, we've got hotels that are waiting on that kind of stuff.
Yes, Jim, can I ask for clarity on the well?
Let's, let him, let him go ahead and finish what he's doing.
That's fine. There's a lot of.
If you don't mind, let's, let's.
There's a lot of technical questions around it, so I apologize for opening that up.
You started it.
I know, I did, I did. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. And then stormwater, obviously, we've got two different areas shown there. We've got to meet water quality standards, flood control standards. That's all going to be driven by the state regulations. Working with the Seoul Conservation District on that. Likely DEQ as well for permitting and construction plans. So again, we do that every day, all day long with all our projects. So we're very familiar with those state regulations and how to handle that. Beyond that, traffic, again, we worked with VDOT, did a plumery study there. They had already anticipated some growth in this area, so had done some studies. Really, what the, what the employees were looking at, that was really managed within the background growth that VDOT had already planned in. So it's not a substantial, you know, impact there with traffic. There is coordination that needs to occur, which is lining entrances up, turn lanes, those kinds of things. In addition, we've proffered that we're going to dedicate, you know, more land along our frontage. That way, everything's set back and if future improvements are needed, additional right of way is there for VDOT or whoever needs to make those, you know, 10, 20 years down the line. So anyway, just tried to, tried to set that up for success and really the county's success. But that's just good, good planning. So again, been very supportive with staff and kind of helping us through that. So that's all I had. And again, I'll have to answer more questions.
Now, we'll go ahead and let him ask, we'll ask you whatever questions we might have in reference to your report. So, Ms. Price, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, your presentation. On the well, is that a town well site or is, it is, so it's a town well site?
It's what I've been told.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't aware they had one there. Can I ask a couple of other things while you're up there? So CLO, if you get the rezoning and the approvals for the project, will you then build it and operate it?
I'll have to let Mike, let Michael and Robert answer that question.
I mean, you're, or you're going to?
I just do all the planning, I just do all the planning, design, permitting. That's, that's my role in this.
Okay.
Got you.
Do you have any technical questions on sewer, water, storm?
No, not any technical stuff, I don't think.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. So as Michael referenced, we've been working with emergency services. It's something that's important to us. We understand that it's a volunteer fire department, you know, supporting that, the continuation of that as it's envisioned is important to us. We want to continue to be engaged. This is not, you know, a proffer and go kind of situation. We see this as a long-term engagement. These are long-lived assets that, you know, we plan to steward for a long time. And so we want, you know, the right adequate resources to be allocated to those. I'll spend a second on power supply here. So, whoops, excuse me. Sorry about that. There we go. So as Sam mentioned, we've aligned a substation here to be as close to this substation as possible. The way it works, right, is that Dominion is sort of, think of them as like your wholesale provider and Rappahannock as your retail provider. And so you have to have two substations effectively, though it is one structure, where you take the distribution voltage, or sorry, the wholesale voltage and then turn it into distribution voltage. So we've allocated that based on designs and guidance from Rappahannock who we've had at active discussions with. We filed our will, our load service request in May of this year, so it's in the queue. Dominion should be aware of it. And we separately engage power flow studies from multiple consultants, same consultants that are used by the RTOs, regional transmission organizations, excuse me for speaking acronyms. And they both identified that this substation that is currently planned to be expanded is the most likely point of interconnection for us. This line that's being upgraded is where we would most likely be served. Again, it's most likely. Dominion's never going to tell you that they're not going to build more lines because it's in their best interest to build more lines. So, but they have to prove that there's a need for those lines. And it'd be hard for them to prove that there was the need when this line has capacity at this substation. And so there might be additional upgrades from a network perspective, but those would all be either far upstream or far downstream, right? Most of these upgrades were originally initiated based on the increased demand in Northern Virginia, trying to get power from sort of the lower parts of PJM up into that load pocket around DC. So again, that's, that's our best guess. We've done the analysis to the best of our abilities, feel as confident as we can sitting here today. But there are, you know, moving pieces and other constituencies and things that are outside of our control. But we, again, are doing our best here. With regards to phasing, you know, the goal here is to phase in. That's the way we sort of envision it now. It's a little iterative, right? We want to market this to customers. We can't market it to customers until we have it re-zoned. Once we start marketing it to customers, we anticipate that the demand already exists for the site. We've talked to a few customers already. And we believe that, you know, we will phase into this starting late '27, early '28, and kind of phase into it over the next three to four years. There are coordination that needs to be handled. I mean, there's going to be traffic impacts from all the other activity going on in the area. We're aware, well aware of that. We'd like to think we play in the sandbox well with others. Again, this is not a proffer and go kind of situation. We want to do this right because these are long-lived assets and people have long memories. So, you know, with that, just wanted to sort of touch on it. I can go more into it as you guys would like. And again, just want to conclude, you know, I didn't start off with this, but Culpeper is special to me. I went to American University in Washington DC. And my then-girlfriend and I would travel this direction to get grass-fed beef because of the substantial agriculture in the area. You know, the, this part of the country is beautiful. You know, everyone should drive Shenandoah National Park at some point in their life. You know, it's, it's important to us that we preserve that. Like I said earlier, we are engaging on the air fast, because that's a big part of Culpeper culture. We, Michael and I just stayed at the time in because we wanted to sort of experience it. The, you know, I just learned that there's farm tours next week. I wish we could have gotten involved in that earlier. So, you know, those type of things, we want to embrace Culpeper as the home of a multi-billion dollar investment. And, you know, look forward to continuing to engage with you, not just in this role, but as members of your community going forward. So with that, I'll open it for questions. And if I can't answer it, I'm sure one of my colleagues can.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, if there are any questions for the applicant, any further questions, we can go ahead and open it up at this time, okay?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I just got a couple of things. In your revised proffer, you mentioned providing a one-time $50,000 payment to the Culpeper Fire Department once you get the certificate of occupancy for the, for the first building. How did you arrive at the figure $50,000?
It was meant to just be, you know, a gesture of goodwill. The tax basis that these projects are going to create is designed to be delegated by the elected officials appointed to allocate those resources. I had a conversation with Junior Pairman yesterday about other ways we can engage with the fire department. There are needs for a new firehouse and things like that. That's an engagement that's going to be a long-term discussion and something that we're happy to have outside of the rezoning conversation. But it's, the need, the need is well-known, understood, and we look forward to engaging with the county on that going forward.
Mr. Pairman's aware of the $50,000 pledge and is happy with that?
I can't speak for Mr. Pairman.
Okay. Let me ask you one other thing. In your, in your renderings of the buildings, you don't show any rooftop air conditioning units, which are a common feature of data centers. And I think Sam mentioned that you're going to use air-cooled HVAC system with this. So wouldn't you have to have the rooftop air conditioning units?
There will be. The balance of plant, some of it's on the side of the buildings here, some of it will go on top. I'm not sure why it's not clear in these renderings, to be honest with you. The plan from a cooling perspective is as follows. We're going to use state-of-the-art systems. They are a water glycol mix. They do not use any town water whatsoever. It's a closed-loop system, very simple. So the plan is, is you truck in this watery glycol mix, charge the system, and it goes. There'll be occasional, you know, sort of recharges, but they're not meaningful. And again, you're trucking in those recharges. The water use for this project is really potable water for sewer, you know, breakroom coffee, all the things that we take for granted in our daily lives that this site needs. The, there's no intent to use county or town water at all for cooling. There will be the best, most efficient cooling technology available at the time of construction. It may or may not be the same across all three buildings. Right now, we've used the, you know, what we're doing in Arizona, which is obviously the most water-sensitive part of the country. You could debate that, maybe California is more water-sensitive. But the, the plan is to use best available, you know, you want to be energy-efficient, you want to be water-efficient, and you want to be sound-efficient. And we plan to do all three of those things.
Okay, on the sound, I noted your, your decibel projections. I think 60 at the property line during the day and 70 at night. I mean, that's well below the town noise ordinance. But, you know, the common complaint about noise with data centers isn't so much the decibel level, it's just the constant nature of the, of the hum. There aren't many houses as close to that now. I mean, there may, in the future, be quite a few. I mean, do you have any, any comment to make about, about the constant noise complaints that could come from this?
So unfortunately, I can't anticipate what other people's issues may or may not be. I know that there are data centers in Northern Virginia that get along really well with their neighbors. You know, I, it, I don't think that there's going to be any more noise from a consistency perspective than Route 15 already provides in terms of a hum. You know, there's parts of Route 15 right in front of this property that sound like a washboard. So, you know, it's hard for me to anticipate what people's complaints would be. But again, we anticipate to be available 24/7, that is true. And we plan to stay well within the city ordinances for, for noise.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I just want to be clear. You have not gotten confirmation from REC that they can handle your power load?
Not written full confirmation. We've had conversations with them and we're in the queue.
But it is not confirmed?
No, but the way, yes, that's true.
That's it, not confirmed. In one of your drawings, you show several generators. How many generators will be on-site? What kind of fuel are they using? Where will be fuel stored on-site? Is there containment?
So this site is using 3.4 megawatt diesel generator as it's rendered now. We are going to revisit that as part of the building plans. Arroyo has another portfolio company that does emergency power generation that is gas fire. We have not fully vetted that into this design because this is a CLO project, but it is something we are currently considering. Sean, you have the exact number of generators off the top of your head? So I'm told 60 total. The, again, right now, there's anticipated to be diesel. There's no onsite fuel storage. They have belly tanks in the generators. The way it works is those belly tanks have enough fuel so that the data center can effectively evacuate all of its critical data to another data center elsewhere. So the network acts as its own resiliency once those belly tanks. The cloud is its own sort of redundancy, if you will, past that time.
Is there any talk about adding any type of a solar aspect to this facility?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, that's not correct. Just for aesthetics, the, the parking lot lights are going to be those little cool lights that have the little solar panels on top.
Okay.
So, but, but in terms of like utility scale power, no, no contemplation of any solar attributes.
Okay, what will be used for the fire suppression system?
You can, you can come up, yeah, you can come up.
Phone or what is it?
But he has to speak into the microphone. I have to speak into that microphone.
So it is, it is water. It would be a water-based fire suppression system. In the administrative areas, it's just a traditional wet pipe, you know, fire suppression system. In the data entry area, in the data hall areas, it'll be what they call dry pipe. So there will be pipes overhead with no water in them. And then it's a dual-action dry pipe system. So there's two events that have to occur for the, for the lines to be charged with water and for the water to be deployed so that there's no unnecessary or accidental deployment. So, but this is, but, and maybe the question I'm not hearing is, it's not going to be like FM 200 or anything like that, where it takes all the oxygen out of the, of the room. So it's, it would be water.
Okay.
If I answered your question.
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
So what do you guys estimate your water usage being, considering taking into account if there was a, an episode, a fire episode?
I had that question or conversation with the fire chief about that because, again, just anticipation of how much water demand would be. Within each building, there's firewall. So you look at a fire area, so it's not more than 2,000 gallons per minute, which is a standard commercial building size. So really, the offices are the largest fire area in the building because everything else is even smaller than that. So you'd have that containment within those fire areas.
So. Right, I understand. So roughly, how many fire areas are there per building?
So there's, there's, it's a 12-megawatt data hall. So there would be in total 548-megawatt floors. So that's five times four is 20 plus the three office areas, so 23.
So you're estimating 30 to 50 high-tech jobs?
It's 23. It's 23.
So 30 to 50 high-tech jobs, but how many jobs total?
That's the total. I mean.
That's your janitors, that's your landscape?
That's all, that's all in. You probably third-party out the landscaping, so we didn't count those.
Security, all that.
Same thing with, so that includes security and the professionals working the data halls on a regular basis. It doesn't include sort of third-party services, which would be probably janitorial and landscaping.
Okay. What are you guys estimating on construction trips? I saw some trip, trip traffic stuff in here, but it didn't really specify during construction what you're looking at for trips.
Sean, you want to come take that? Just come up.
Thank you for joining, taking the time out of your night to be here. So my name is Sean Conley with Arco Design Build. We build, will be the general contractor on this first phase of construction. What was the question again?
So during construction, what, what number of trips are we looking at?
So we will be here bi-weekly. That, that's a requirement within Arco. Oh, mountain trucks. There, there will not be high-traffic flow. I don't know the mountain trucks right now, but it's, compared to a distribution center, it's not very significant.
So you guys also talk about having battery storage on-site. So what kind of size are we looking at? What types of batteries?
So that's, that's a, that's a reference to the UPS. It's not utility-scale battery storage, so we're not trying to put a power plant on the site, except for the backup gens. The UPS is, they're lithium-ion technology. It's the same thing that you would see in like a backup battery that you might install on your alarm system in your home. Or sometimes you use them on your router in your home, so if you lose power, you don't lose internet. It's a UPS. They're lithium-ion batteries, and they're meant, they're, I think there's going to be... Yeah, it's a, it's a stopgap so that when the system trips, if the grid fails, if Rappahannock says, "Hey, we can't serve you because we have to go serve this hospital," you know, something like that were to happen, it basically acts as a bridge to the backup generation on-site coming on. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head because the technology is evolving so fast. But as, as of today, it's lithium-ion batteries. There's UPS enough to fly. I think it's about 15 minutes to switch over. The diesel gen sets kick on in a matter of seconds. So it's, you know, redundant on redundancy.
So what's kind of the life expectancy of those and how do you guys handle disposal of those when they've reached end of life?
I'm not sure exactly. Again, it depends on the exact technology deployed. But again, like our end customers are super sustainability-focused, right? So we are, we are expected to and hold ourselves to the standard of doing the best we can with any recyclables or anything like that. The lithium-ion recycling business is in, it's sort of fledgling in the U.S., but it is growing. And so I anticipate that by the time we get to that lifecycle stage and these batteries, we'll be recycling them.
Ms. Thornhill had mentioned about phasing. I mean, land-wise, are we looking 20 acres at a time? How much land disturbance are we looking at as you're doing this project at one time?
So the, the mass grading that we're going to do will all take place, assuming we keep the project momentum, given your approval tonight. We'll, we'll just target kicking that off in the spring of '24. It should be done by spring of '23, if not, or sorry, spring of '24, should be done by spring of '25, if not year-end '24. The idea is to do all the mass grading at once because that allows you to balance the site. Cut dirt from here, move it there, and it minimizes the amount of additional soil we need to bring in or soil, rock material we need to move offsite. So minimizes traffic and also minimizes sort of the, what's Culpeper's dirt, stays what's Culpeper's dirt. So that, that'll all happen at once. And then the buildings will be built serially, starting sort of thereafter. It takes about two years, 18 months to actually construct a building. The supply chain constraints that we're seeing globally right now means that we have to start placing those procurement orders soon. And that's also a part of why time is of the essence in terms of this application.
So are we looking at 100 acres of bare land? I mean, how, what are we looking at at one time that's going to be bare land that we have to worry about erosion and sediment?
Yeah, it would be.
We have to prepare erosion control plans. You can only have bear earth for seven days where it's got to be addressed. So, but what Robert is saying is that they are looking to, to mass grade all three building pads at the same time. So if that's, yeah, I was going to say 80, 80, 90 acres that we would grade out at one time. That's, that's just the most efficient way to do it. And that, that, back to the trip generation, that's why there's few trips. Because really, there's no, nothing coming, other than a dozen guys coming to work on the job site a day. That's, that's what's coming in. Once it gets into the building construction, there will be more trades, obviously. So you could have 100 different trades coming a day, you know, to work on the building. Like, like your trip generation. VDOT did speak to that and wants us to kind of coordinate that with entrances and have a plan set up for that. So they're looking for us to do an assessment of Knolls Mill Road before, before construction and then assess the road again after construction for any repairs and things that are needed. So VDOT, VDOT's been on top of that as well.
Now, in the documents that we got from staff, you talk about the facility being up to 2.4 million square feet. But in this, it says 1.4. So what is it?
1.4 is what we've currently planned. 1.4 is what we currently have planned.
Okay.
All right.
You've talked about, you know, your all's commitment to the community and how well and how much we value agriculture around here. So in, would you be willing to modify your proffer at all since you're taking land that is being currently used for agriculture production and proffer money towards the school FFAs or the local 4-H chapters or something that actually gives back to agriculture since we're removing land from production?
This time, we're not prepared to modify our proffer, but it is something that we would be absolutely open to engaging. It's some, those types of programs are something I just learned about today, so I'd like to learn more about them. But in terms of ongoing engagement with local agriculture and FHA, that's something that's also hits me home in Texas. You know, I think it is absolutely something we consider, but we prefer not to modify our proffers at this time.
That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you very much.
All right. So my questions are going to start with mass grading. And have you submitted to the DEQ or you have to wait for, are rezoning? Or where are, where's the DEQ in the mass grading concept?
Good question. Yeah, that all happens with the site plan process.
Get a little closer to that mic.
There we go. We would first work through Sam's department with, and then that would go through DEQ as well after rezoning occurs.
Okay. All right. And then I'm also, safety is real important to myself. And the fact that you will have, those buildings look very close together and 60 generators. I mean, that's a lot of generators. And if it's only 50, fine, or if it's 52, I don't know. But there's a lot of generators there with a lot of fuel in them. And they're in the belly tanks of the generators, et cetera. And I don't know what you had as far as a meeting with the fire guys, but what is the, the plan? The overall safety's part of this. I mean, it could be pretty hot fire, I would think, being that close together, should there be a catastrophe?
Yeah. So if there were, I can't speak to a true catastrophe, but the way they're designed is they're kind of sitting in, they're, each generator has its own shell with its own firewall. And so they're, they're completely isolated from each other. And part of the reason, you kind of get an additional safety feature by relying on that belly tank because it's not like there's a giant fuel system connecting each of the generators. So the generators are on the same electrical grid. They share a wire diagram, if you will, but they're not actually connected to each other. So that mitigates some of your fire sort of runaway risk, if you will.
From a generator, and then from the building, because you're using the fire suppression is water-based. Is there going to be any kind of a water tank there? No, you don't have that in the plan. Because I don't know how you're going to get enough pressure. Let's say that you're going to have a well there, so why not some storage tank? I'm not...
Yeah, we, that's part of our, we've got to go through ISO calculations with the Fire Department. That was something we had, actually already had performed in my conversation with the Fire Department to make sure they were comfortable and also to make sure the town could supply that water. So there's ample water for fire suppression without the well today. So again, to...
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is we've had a situation where we had something and it was at, a huge fire at the end of the line, and they couldn't get enough there. So I'm just saying to you, hopefully in your design process, that you will be very much aware of that because it's, it's kind of a ways away from, and the pump stations to get it there, et cetera. So I would think that you'd have onsite storage. I don't think you can take it out of Mountain Run Lake, but I mean, Mountain Run Stream, so you have to do something else.
The, the public supply would supply that. It's a, it's a 12-inch line. We would be bringing in, again, probably likely a 12-inch line to the facility. Because again, you want that as a trunk line that's going to back feed into the system from the well later. There's a half million gallons a day capability in the well there if it were needed. So, so again, I think there's...
The well that's on-site, there's a half a million gallons a day in that?
According to their study, yes, when they tested it.
Really? Okay. Okay. All right, that's a good thing, I suppose. Glad to hear that. All right. And then I guess the other part of my thought process is being, the compatibility with what else is going to happen on Knolls Mill because there are several residential, there's a residential property ahead of you being developed back towards town. Then perhaps this one across the street's going to have a residential component. And then you guys are a rather industrial component. And all of the traffic in Knolls Mill itself is not industrial-grade road, if you ask that. And the school system is at the end of it. So when the school buses are trying to get in and out those two times of the day, you know, and then you guys are in there in the construction phase for the next three years, whatever it is. I just want to ask your meetings with VDOT, how have they addressed the issue?
So again, they, they want us to do a pre-assessment of Knolls Mill Road before construction starts so that we know what, what conditions that road in today.
Right.
And then what is it after construction? So they want to make sure that concrete trucks aren't tearing the road up and...
Well, we live here, so we know that, we know what they're like today. So I'm asking you, what are you going to do to make them better?
Well, they've got, well...
VDOT's going to do it.
VDOT's going to be, yeah, they're VDOT roads, so...
VDOT roads, so they're going to do it.
That's right.
Okay.
But as far as the trip, so typically, we assess road construction and base, based off trips per day. So again, based off the volume of, of construction, that's one thing. Long-term trips with employees, again, it's, it's very light.
Well, that one, yeah, I'm not so worried about after. It's during this construction phase for the next three years. That road is going to take extra traffic from not just yourselves, but somebody else. So I don't know how VDOT can say, "Okay, we'll handle it" because we have dirt roads in our county and they're not handling those. So we need something.
If, if there are repairs and things needed for that, they're going to put that back on, on the developer for that.
Like straightening out the curves and such?
We're not going to realign the road.
All right, okay.
The actual pavement section and, and assessment of the quality of that pavement and again, what kind of degradation occurs during construction. So that, that's what they want to put back on the developer with that assessment.
Tear the road up, yeah. Okay. Okay. And I think that's all I have at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You talked about the, the generator and so forth. How often, and obviously the generators will come on if there's a power problem, but I'm assuming you're going to need to test those and so forth. How often does that happen and how long do they run in the test phase?
They, they test from between 10 minutes and an hour each time. Usually more on the 10-minute side unless there's something like a vibration issue or something identified. And they test each generator monthly. And so there's a sort of a rolling cycle, and that's included in the sound estimates that we have and anticipates that testing.
Okay. I, I know you said you're concerned about, you know, protecting the, the Knolls Mill side because you got the develop, that possibly may be residential over there. You do have one row of generators along Knolls Mill. Is there any reason why you didn't put those on the other side of the building?
It was, it was due, sorry. Let me pull up the...
So the building there all the way on my right, you've got the generators along Knolls Mill as opposed to along 29.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was mostly due to just the layout of the site and trying to make road access, et cetera, more, you know, feasible for the one-story building. It's something in the design phase. If that was something that Sam and the county wanted to push back on, we could definitely revisit.
Possible. Okay. We talked about the air handling units on, on the roof. And you talked about the generators having walls around them, if you will. Will the air handlers also be, they have some kind of a wall so that you don't see that air handler?
To be honest with you, I think that's why the renderings look like they don't have them. I think that's the plan.
Okay.
But that, that's just my understanding.
Okay. And you said that you're not using Halon or anything like that to, to, for fire suppressant?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the big concerns that I have personally is, and the fire thing, and the fire issue is, we've got one, these buildings are pretty big. They're 60 some feet high, plus another 15 feet maybe for everything else. It's almost 75. We've got one fire truck in the county that, that has a ladder that can reach that high. We're looking at possibly four or five data centers right now into the county. I'm, I, I think it's irresponsible for us not to have some kind of plan to have another truck to do that. Or at least think about options on that. I know you, you said you contribute $50,000 to the fire services. That doesn't help us a whole lot with the trucks. Other options, I think we've had some, some other applications where they gave so much, so much money per square foot of space. I know there's, yeah, I know a lot of people have told us, "Well, yeah, you're getting a lot of tax benefit from this project down the way." Is another, just brainstorming, you know, could you, could you get that money upfront to, to get the truck and then get the tax bene, you know, take it away from the tax benef, or, or provide the tax benefit later? It seems like the county is hanging themselves out here. We got one truck to, to accommodate any issue.
Vice Chairman, I, I think you're really hitting the nail on the head in terms of the way you're thinking about things. And that's also the way I've had conversations with, with Junior Perryman about that exact sort of mindset. So you're right, the tax revenues here are material. We're talking conservatively $3 billion of investment on our side alone, so excluding others. So if you take 50 basis points on that, that's $15 million a year in tax revenue, which is more than 10 fire trucks a year. Now it's up to the elected officials and their appointees to out, you know, allocate that tax revenue. But the...
The problem is, though, we can't wait five years to get the fire truck.
Totally. And I hear you. That exact type of thinking about using tax abamens to incentivize upfront payments, we would like to entertain. It's not something that we can proffer because I believe that that's a many-month conversation to have, and we are happy to have it during the, the site planning phases. I've intimated to Sam, I've intimated to, to Mr. Perryman. I mean, I think the, the, the same type of mindset could be applied to your new firehouse. Whether it's us or someone else, there should be a, a business solution to addressing your needs. Again, I, I, I don't think that that's appropriate to include in a rezoning, but it is something as a steward in the community that we are absolutely concerned with. We want our, our investment to be protected and safe. And so those types of business-minded solutions where, you know, we make that capital outlay and then receive tax payments on the line are 100% on the table. Again, I'd like to table those for outside of the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. Nope, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know what else?
Me. My fellow commissioners have been thorough, but I'll try to come up with a few other details. You're saying the noise limit, am I correct, would be waived during generator running during emergency use? What is that, how much louder would they be during emergency use? And what would the dur, what's the, how does that duration play in of, of running in that mode?
One second, grab the notes. I don't, I don't have the exact answer. We can, we could definitely get that for you. The duration on the belly tanks is around eight hours.
Okay. So ju, just down the road, if you did have residential neighbors, I'm just curious, what periods of time we, we would be negating you're sticking to the decibel level at the property line? So I was just curious about that. And then I'm piecing together an accumulation of reading that, well, and you're... And then I'm piecing together an accumulation of reading that, and you're a student of the greater grid and needs in Virginia. So, so some of your use will affect farmland far away. So we're considering what, how are you working, let me, I've got a lot of questions, let's slow down. As you move into this neighborhood as a data center, can you describe how you're going to compete to get the power served you first? Is it first come, first served, and Rappahannock Electric is they need to provide to you by a date? Or could you ever be sitting there with being deficient in being supplied?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So this is my understanding, because I'm switching hats onto the load side of the equation, so not as well versed as I am on the generation side, so bear with me a bit here. But we submit a load service request for an engineering study, and that's a serial process, so the, the plans are studied serially, right? But I could put a submission in today for power in 2030, someone right behind me could put a submission in for power in 2027, right? And mine would get studied first, but they might still get power before me because their need is in 2027. And so it's, Rappahannock, my understanding, is considers readiness. So if we have customers and we have the equipment necessary to build the substation and the equipment necessary to take that load, then we will get power. So physically, from the way the grid works, it's serial in the way the analysis is done, but the supply is made available to meet the needs. There is a scenario where, like you've seen in Northern Virginia, where there is people ready for power that can't get power and they're having to figure out other solutions, some more successfully than others. Separately, you have to think about the supply on the grid. The supply is fungible in terms of you can't, I mean, you can theoretically, but it's not practical to tag an electron from its source to where it is consumed, right? The electricity will flow to the point of least resistance, it's kind of like, like water, right? So in PJM, from a procurement standpoint for a load this size, you can actually go out into the market and buy power. So while Rappahannock will still physically be serving that last bit of electron, which will travel along Dominion System, the way I procure power financially is not necessarily through Rappahannock, if that makes sense.
Yes. Okay. So and the other thing, I think we talk about locally with our neighbors and other landowners, there's talk of how your use and all the neighborhood of data centers and, and are going to spur on rapid need for power line expansion within existing right-ofways, as well as perhaps new lines. And these are in rural places in ag land that's going out to the outer edges of our county. And so can, I know that's outside of your immediate area, but can you speak to any, share any information you have on triggers that spur that growth and what will really happen?
So, so the way the grid is modeled is they run an N minus one minus one analysis, right? You can kind of think about it as N minus two, but it's really more sequential than that. So they look for points where the grid would overload, again, the thought, the paradigm being generation-focused, but they also look for places where there are single points of failure and are there multiple paths to serve different loads and things like that. So when they, when the power flow modeling suggests that there'd be an overload, that's when they look for another path. Now, the investor-owned utility has to go to the state or its other regulatory bodies and, and actually verify that there's that need for that additional line or those additional upgrades because they're spending effectively ratepayer money. The, the, the sort of the considerations are very material in ag. For example, I just learned that you can't have a transmission line too close to a cattle farm because cows get electrocuted. And so all of those considerations are taken into, like, all of that is taken into consideration when routing a transmission line. Now, I don't know how eminent domain works in, in the state of Virginia, I can't speak to that. What I can tell you is that the, the, the data center world, the electrification of EVs, the electrification of everything, moving away from gas stoves, et cetera, this build-out in transmission is going to happen. The National Laboratory estimates that we need 4X the transmission we currently do in order to hit net zero by 2030, or sorry, 2050. $4 trillion? Sorry, it's 200, sorry, excuse me, it's 215% of current infrastructure. It is $4 trillion in investment over the next 30 years to get to net zero, and that's including using carbon capture and other abamens procedures. The transmission lines are coming. Sorry, I don't mean to spook anyone, but it's going to happen. And hopefully, you know, by being good stewards and thinking thoughtfully, as the county has done a really good job, to try to concentrate its load in the technology zones, that you can mitigate those impacts as much as you can.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have to digest that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to send you the study. You know, the, it's part of it, right, is, as generation moves further from load centers, you need more wires to move it, and that's part of, you know, moving away from fossil fuels and our dependency thereof. So it's, you know, it's the knock-on effects. The digital revolution's a small part of that, but it's really just about the broader shifting of the way our grid works. Again, happy to follow up with that study.
Okay, thank you.
One thing, just a point of clarity from me, so fire suppression is coming from town water, correct?
Hold on one second. Did he have something, the gentleman have something he wanted?
Yeah, I was just going to, just back to the decimals for the emergency, it is capped at 70, so it's, it's not a uncapped. Does that clarify your question?
So I just misunderstood that, that you're going to be waived, you're not going to try to keep the same limit. I mean, the limit's the limit.
There is no waived. That's right. There is no waived, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
And, and I, I don't know how the water and the county work together with, I mean, it's coming through the county, but they share water, so.
Right.
It's kind, yeah, I don't.
It's going to be supplied by a government agency, whether it's.
Through the county.
Through the, there you go. Okay, that was just for clarification, I wanted to make sure. One point I wanted to touch on was we have directly, your neighbors are two of our prominent school systems here, you know, Germana and the C-Tech Center, and we talk about those high-paying jobs. Is there any kind of input that you can come alongside those schools and kind of undergird them to fill or to properly educate and, and degree-wise to steer our new, you know, graduates into those buildings? We'd like to keep, selfishly so, we'd like to keep, you know, all the jobs local if we could. I just, I don't hear a lot about what's required to be a data center manager and a systems architect, all that stuff. Is that something that you can speak about or have done in the past? Do you have any examples?
Yeah, I could speak to it just a little bit. One, you know, in that vein, we're, part of why we're interested in the AirFest is because it's, has that STEM angle to it. And that was just, you know, low-hanging fruit, it's something we could do relatively easily, low-barrier entry. You're right, those schools are right there. First of all, I'm happy to come talk anytime and try to, you know, inspire people, whether it's around energy or finance or the intersection thereof, infrastructure. You know, time is precious and something I'm happy to give. In terms of direct pipeline to those jobs, I mean, rural America is seeing a large brain drain. It is a problem. It's not something that we're going to solve with one data center campus, but absolutely to the extent that we can facilitate those communicate, lines of communication, similarly to the way we plan to coordinate with fire, it, it's absolutely of importance to us to do that. Similarly, like, I just learned today about the E-Squared program and how that gives high school students the opportunity to pitch jobs, sort of an evolution beyond the STEM stuff that the AirFest does. That's the type of thing that we want to get involved with, whether it's, you know, mentoring pitches or judging competitions, you know, and that kind of naturally creates a vested interest. The, the people who work here, their kids are going to be going to the same schools. And so, you know, there's sort of a natural progression there. I can't speak to a specific program or specific, you know, sort of pipeline or that we could set aside a certain amount of jobs for locals, but our intent is to do that. I mean, from the fact that we're using a local Virginian civil firm, we're going to use local contractors for all of the mass grading to the extent possible. I mean, the, the goal here is to use local where we can. I want to eat local, I want my lawyer to be local, you know, it's, it's part of the paradigm.
My final question, really.
Go ahead.
If he wants to speak, I'll let him speak.
Yeah, yeah, so, great question, and Robert doesn't, we haven't talked about this, but in my past life and even currently, we're, we're currently working with, in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, if you're familiar with that, it's near Knoxville. So it's, there's, one of the national labs is there that, and the Department of Energy has 27 national laboratories around the country, and these laboratories are funded by and operated by the Department of Energy, and they carry out mandates for the Department of Energy. The largest lab that they have in the system is in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. It's also where the Manhattan Project was done, right? So I've done projects in other lives with the lab going back close to 10 years now. And one of the things that did occur from that was there was two curriculum started at the University of Tennessee Knoxville, where one was a, kind of a, it wasn't a master's degree, but it was, one was like a four-year curriculum for data center management, so DCIM, data center infrastructure management. And then a lot of these jobs are electrical engineers, mechanical engineers that go into these facilities. And, and then specifically data center management, because when I got into the data center business, nobody knew what it was. They were repurposed office buildings starting out, and then they became purpose-built facilities, meaning they were designed and built specifically to be a data center. So when I got into the industry, it was, there was no training, right? There was no curriculum. But to your point, it is kind of heavy lift to put a curriculum in place where there's two basically four-year degrees or two-year, four-year curriculum where you have to have the, the people to teach it, you know, the professors, and then the curriculum and getting that into the system and everything. Probably a heavy lift for us, but we're certainly, I've been affiliated with it on the fringes and would be happy to make connections between Germana and UT Patel or UT Knoxville and how they did their system. And maybe there could be some collaboration there, and be happy to do that.
Thank you. And my final, my final question is pretty much at the elementary level. Culpeper has been bombarded with data center and solar facility applications, I think. Bombarded's my word, not, not anybody else's. What was, was it an algorithm that chose Culpeper? Was it, was it a void? Was it a, a, just a, why Culpeper?
Yeah, so Culpeper has a really interesting story from a data center perspective, in that you had the Federal Reserve, which later became a fallout shelter for Congress, which later became a, was owned by HP and then donated back to, for Library of Congress. So there's, from a connectivity perspective, there's really good connectivity through Culpeper. Meanwhile, you see some of the power constraints that they're experiencing in Northern Virginia, and Culpeper's on the other side of those power constraints. And so you mix the latency with the proximity to the largest data center market in the world, and it kind of naturally coalesces. And then your, your economic development folks have done a really good job. They were given a mandate to go drum up interest in the space, and by creating the technology zone and concentrating it so well, you know, I think they had, you know, remarkable success in doing so. I think, to your point, like, the bombardment is real. The, the way that you have all planned around that and created sort of this zone where you're concentrating your loan, your, your load will mitigate as much of those impacts as you can, while giving the county the benefit of the tax revenue. And the other piece of this is that the, while they do create jobs and they're high-paying jobs, they aren't going to materially contribute to any housing crunch you're seeing. And so, you know, it's kind of a win-win in that, and I think that talking with some of the economic development folks, if, once we get the data center, you know, sort of solution comprehensively planned, switching to more manufacturing focusing and stuff like that makes a lot of sense. You know, again, thank you all for your time. Really appreciate the questions, they're very thoughtful, very clear that you guys care about what you do. I hope it comes across that I care about what I do. You know, I would just request that if there's any opposition that wants to speak tonight, that we have the opportunity to rebut if possible.
Public hearing.
Cool. Thank you very much.
I think we might have, just to close out, does anyone else have any questions that they want to just close out on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we now open a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, come forth to the podium, speak loudly and clearly into the microphone, and give you a full name for the record. So I see the gentleman in the back. Yes, sir. Come right on in.
Yeah, I was going to say, good evening. I'm Tim Carney. I'm at 15535 Knoll's Mill Road. I'm here representing the Armstrong Family Farm. With me tonight, my wife, Marion Armstrong Carney, her sister, Betsy Armstrong Spencer, and Betsy's husband, Dave Spencer. First of all, I just want to say we are very much in favor of this project. We do have a few concerns that have been addressed tonight. I'm probably going to be a little repetitive, which I apologize for, but as you mentioned, we have a contract purchaser on our property that has filed for a rezoning, excuse me, for a mixed use of residential and commercial. So we want to make sure that, as was mentioned earlier, we get along in the sandbox with our new neighbor, and that's very much what we would like to do. As was addressed earlier, a few of our concerns regarding noise is the fact that the emergency generator yards are facing Knoll's Mill at this time, and we just think it would be more logical that they be turned toward Route 29 and, for lack of a better term, absorbed by that noise. Also, the other issues were addressed regarding the noise, so I won't go into those. I do have a copy of my concerns here, I'd be glad to give to anybody. Also regarding the electrical substation, we were wondering the possibility of moving that closer to Knoll's Mill Road. Substations typically will be shorter than the buildings and I think could be easier buffered by Knoll's Mill if it was shifted closer to the road. Regarding the road improvements, I'm not sure if the traffic study for the data center also took into consideration the traffic study that's already been in place with the rezoning application that we submitted. We would like to see a coordination there. We didn't see a, the traffic study documents online with, with this proposal. I didn't know if that was something that was available to the public that we could, we could see.
Direct those questions to us and we'll get, you'll have some answers.
All right. So we are pleased that the data center is providing a buffer along Knoll's Mill Road. We were wondering if possibly we could see some sort of cross-section of this area that the engineers prepared so that we could understand exactly where the buffer is going to be located and how big it is going to be. It was addressed earlier that the, it appears that the data center is, is going to be built in phases. Will this be proffered into the plan? Because I don't believe it is currently addressed. The renderings that are proposed for the buildings are very attractive. Definitely would be something that I think would be great for the neighborhood. We were wondering, though, if that is an idea or a commitment, and if possible, if that could also be proffered as in the renderings. There are other issues that, that we have that regarding, there seems to be some vagueness in the right-ofway for Knoll's Mill Road, future road expansion, things that we would like to see put into more specific terms. There was mentioned earlier that the data center engineer has talked to us. We have not had any discussion at all. We'd love to sit down and talk to them about our concerns and. We'd love to sit down and talk to them about our concerns and possibly get these addressed, you know, for, for working together in the future to get everything lined up. So I appreciate your time. Can I leave a copy of this?
Yes, I was going to ask if you would just give a copy to that young lady right there. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, Laura Rogers.
Say your name again, please.
I just have a few comments. First, after I read the staff report, I had noticed that the traffic impact study has yet to be completed. And I believe the planning commission should wait until those conclusions are made in order to make a better decision about this application. I have a few transportation questions. Will that emergency entrance near Marathon Drive require a waiver or not because it's too close to the intersection there? Will there be a construction entrance on Marathon Drive? And will the applicant maintain and repair damage to the adjacent roads during construction and after completion? The roads leading to this data center rezoning are Route 3, Kaiser Road, Knolls Mill Road, Rogers Road and Bragg's Corner Road. And as you guys know, Bragg's Corner Road is the second most traveled road, secondary road in Culpeper County. And I read all the comment letters from the different agencies and I wholeheartedly agree with Junior Perryman's assessment on the transportation issues that this particular project can have. And the applicant's current proffer statement does not offer any language to these transportation matters. The second comment that I have has to do with the, the power that's going to go to this project. Does Dominion or is it Rappahannock Electric? We, we still don't know, have the capabilities right now to service this project? If not, in which direction will the power come from and what type of tower or poles the, the expansion, what type of expansion will be required? And which properties will be encroached upon for these additional utility easements? My commercial properties are directly adjacent to this applicant's project and I have a transmission line that bisects my property and crosses Marathon Drive. There cannot be any expansion of transmission lines on my fully built-out industrial properties. In closing, I ask that you address these concerns that are still unanswered by the applicant. My concerns is VDOT needs to complete their traffic impact analysis to see if the applicant needs to make additional accommodations to ensure the health, safety and welfare of the citizens that travel in this rezoning application area. Second, Dominion or Rappahannock Electric, whoever it might be, needs to further update the county with more info to see if their current infrastructure can accommodate the power needs for this data center if it, this rezoning is improved. I believe the application should be tabled for at least 30 to 60 days to wait until these outstanding issues are resolved or just sufficiently researched. I don't know. I don't like that. And also for as large of a project this is, this proffer statement is very vague and very light in details. Like the gentleman said before, are you gonna, what are you going to do for the road improvements? There really isn't a lot of detail and I think we deserve some detail. And I think that also we need to do something more with our fire and rescue also. We need to have that part of a proffer statement as well. And I just want some clarification on the timeframe. Is it one year for site work and then 18 months to two years to build one building or all three? So is it seven years or is it three for full build out? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sarah Parmally with Piedmont Environmental Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Culpeper Town and County has approved over 6.8 million square feet of data centers in only five years. The approval of this project will push that number over 8 million gross square feet of approved but unbuilt data centers. The last time Culpeper saw this amount of speculative rezoning was probably in the lead-up to the 2008 real estate crash. We know from the Board of Supervisors meeting with Dominion that the local grid is nearing capacity and that the planned upgrades to the lines are not going to increase the capacity. It's going to increase the efficiency that the energy will move, so it will not actually increase the capacity. And that new diet, then that the approval of new data centers will likely mean new or expanded transmission lines through private land at the expense of the ratepayer. Dominion is already years behind in power production and transmission construction. Because of this backlog, there are thousands of square feet of data centers in Ashburn sitting empty, not producing the tax revenue that their developers likely promised because there is no power. And this increase in energy demand that was referenced is coming primarily from data centers, not from residential use, which has been steadily declining over the past few years. You can see this trend in Dominion's public reports. They're very informative. We also do not know where this new power will come from. Coal gas, nuclear, utility-scale solar or some combination thereof. We also don't know what it will look like when the roughly 2,000 megawatts of data center, of diesel backup generators that are associated with data centers that have already been approved within the town and county switch on because grid stress from data centers has potentially overloaded our power lines and the county is experiencing rolling blackouts at the height of summer and the dead of winter, like Northern Virginia is currently at risk of. So this is my second data center-related hearing in as many days. Between yesterday and today, I have heard developers say this is not speculative many times and many ways and yet also say we do not know yet and this, that will depend on what the end user wants many times and many ways. If Culpeper had use-specific standards for this industry, it wouldn't matter what the end user wanted. It would matter what Culpeper wanted and what was right for Culpeper. And if Culpeper needed an answer, it could require one. So if this is an industry that the county feels it must allow in order to be solvent, then the county needs to adopt use-specific ordinances such as we have for the utility-scale solar proposals. So that, so that the real impact packs of each application can be fully understood prior to the approval and the cumulative risk that Culpeper already carries from prior approvals when entering, entertaining new data center applications can also be considered. I have also heard the phrase, "We need a new middle school" as justification for data center approvals on both sides of the town and county line. If this industry is really so lucrative and so low-impact as it claims to be, then surely the 6.8 million square feet that have already been approved on top of the two data centers that are currently operating should more than pay for that. Finally, I encourage the county, as I encourage the town, please coordinate this development or the development of this industry. Decisions made in the county affect people in the town and vice versa. Do not let this industry drive a wedge between the town and the county. It will benefit no one except for speculative developers looking to take advantage. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed. Any comments? I appreciate, were you getting ready?
No, I was going to let you speak.
Okay. I, I guess, I appreciate, you know, both sides as always. We, you know, that's what we have to do as a planning commission is to hear both sides. Good comments and all that have been made and concerns have been brought forth that, you know, truly would be addressed at some phase in the, in the entire process. I heard the, in reference to the, the technology zone and we went through this in a lot of different situations over the years deciding how to accommodate this type of industry. And the technology zone, when it was presented, was so that it wouldn't be sprawling, it wouldn't be all over our community and destroy a lot of our farms. And I think we've done a really good job in the planning process in, in making that happen. And now that we have it, is, or have applicants coming forth, we know that it's going to be a growing period. You know, just like we were talking about the fire department, we show the fire department is, is going to be a major concern and that has to be addressed. And I think the applicant tonight expressed, hey, they have an investment also, so they don't want to see their investment. They want to protect their investment also. So that is, I'm sure that that is something that would have to be done is that both parties would have to get together and, and decide what is best to accommodate both. I know that we've had, you know, different applications and some approved and every, you know, we look at the dollar amount and all and it's, it's not so much the dollar amount. I just talked with someone today who doesn't know if they're going to be able to afford their taxes in the years to come. And what way are we going to be able to offset that if we don't accept, you know, some other type of means of addressing, addressing this? And me myself, I am concerned with my children and all who want to stay and, you know, who have their homes and, and whether or not they are going to be able to, to accommodate the, the increases that we know are going to come. And unless we, you know, do something about it. Schools and whatever it may be. Yes, we mentioned to the applicant tonight about some things in reference to proffers. We can't say proffer this, it's just a nice little encouragement of some things that are important to us and on our priority list. And yeah, hey, look, you know, if you have more than two data centers, well, do you get two trucks that with the long ladders or because we pray that it not, the situation, catastrophes, two doesn't happen at the same, you know? So it's a lot of things that have to be worked out. VDOT, when it comes to that, is, you know, that's a department or a division that has to be addressed when that time comes and to make sure that safety is, is addressed. And we all up here definitely, when it comes to a point of safety, that is concerned, whether for the applicant in your building or, or the residents that, that, that live here. I wanted to just make sure that I express that to you all is if we have a technology zone, then we can expect these types of applications to come forth. And when they do come forth, then, you know, working with them and trying to make sure that they fit into the area that we have chosen for them to go. Okay? And when I say "we" is not the planning commission, the Board of Supervisors, the elected officers are the ones who decide, you know, make those decisions and have made those decisions. So, so it's getting the right ones in that's willing to work with and what I see for what you all have expressed tonight, very detailed, know what you're doing, understand the system, understand more than anything working with the neighbors. Working with the neighbors. And so with, you know, saying that and, and what I see in staff's study on this and evaluating this and working with staff, I, you know, am in agreement to see it move forward. And because one thing that I'm sure of is that there are going to be more and more applicants. And to, to get someone who, or an applicant who is very concerned and shows that concern and seem to be genuine about, you know, what's being said is, is what I am looking for as far as this great community that we live in to, to make it even better. So I just wanted to express that as the chair. Very good and detailed questions that, you know, that were asked and that's what we have here. We have wearing different hats, realtors and, you know, just all over military and, you know, we've, we've got it all, okay? And, and you all addressed those concerns very well. So, but at this particular point, and, and the good thing about it, I didn't hear anyone say that we didn't need them or, you know, wouldn't accept them. But it was just a situation where we want to make sure it doesn't encroach on anything else that, that we have. And I think where they're located, whether it's water or whatever we're dealing with, it seems that you all have a plan, having all the answers, you know, at this particular point, then, you know, VDOT and all of them have to take it even further so that we can get more detail with those. But I do know that from a data, data center standpoint, is not, other than construction, after that, we don't have to deal with a lot of traffic and things like that. Question was asked and I do, that did get my attention was when it said about the number of years of construction for the buildings or the project. Did that mean for one building, the time that we were using, which would then grow into seven years or was it for, for the project itself? So when it comes to the phases and things like that, I think we'll get that too. So, but I wanted to, you know, just take that time out and, and to present that and because I didn't make any other comments as we let all the other commissioners do. But as the chairman, that's where I stand and that's the way, you know, I feel at this point. So at this time, I think Ms. Thornhill was about ready to...
I was just going to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I thought we should each have some comments left.
Okay.
In summary. In summary, so I'm not quite on the same page as our chairman, but I would like to see that you guys come back to us with some more information. The water and sewer connection plan, another meeting with VDOT, perhaps with some detail on Knolls Mill because that is a serious concern for us if we look at our big picture, not just your site. And then it, it, there is a definite speculative portion to this. I'm not positive it's exactly correct, but we have as one testimonial that there's, you know, over 6 million square feet of already approved data centers without being, nothing's happening yet. So we see a long term before we're ever going to recuperate money to the county into the county coffers and it should not be the answer to, are we going to build a school or not with this money from a data center? So I just would like a little bit more time to take a look at it and that's my thought process at the moment.
Yeah, I kind of agree with a lot of things Ms. Thornhill said. I guess my biggest concern, two big concerns are the, the power supply. I, I think it's, we need to understand whether the, the current plans in place will provide adequate power. Because if they don't and Dominion's going to, going to come in and build new power lines outside of the current right-of-ways, that's a different perspective on, on the impact on this county. So I, I would like to see some time, some time taken to address that and come back and see where we are in that. And I understand your perspective that the transmission lines are coming, but let's not hasten it. So that's my perspective on that. The other one is the, the fire truck issue. You talked that you'd be, you'd like to think about that and maybe come up with, you know, different ways that we might be able to address that. And maybe in a time, taking another month or so, you might be able to talk to either staff or, or the board. I, I don't know if that's appropriate at this point in time to talk about some of the different ways we kind of brainstormed today about getting that traffic or that, that fire truck before we start building any more data centers. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd say Mr. Book's explanation of the grid and power source and power lines is very helpful, very cogent. But he did say the power lines are coming. But that said, Sam, can staff provide us in the next 30 or 60 days?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd say, um, Mr. Book's explanation of the grid and, uh, power source and power lines is very helpful, very cogent, um, but he did say the power lines are coming. But that said, Sam, can staff provide us, in, in the next thirty or sixty days, any additional report information as a general landscape of what to expect on improvements for power lines in the county?
Question burden, I would not be able to guarantee that.
Okay. Okay. Can we pursue resources to educate ourselves greater? It may not be the complete responsibility of the applicant to educate us.
We can certainly, we can certainly try, and then, and I'm sure the applicant would try as well. They need to, um, and they've engaged where they need to, um, the utilities that exist, but I wouldn't be able to guarantee you anything in sixty days of where the power might come from, other than what we know already today, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
Um, I'm in general agreement with, with most of my colleagues here. I, I'm very comfortable that a data center at that location is in substantial accord with the comp plan. Question is, is how does this applicant get there? We've talked about a lot of things tonight, um, and information that we would like to have them bring back more de- uh, detail on. So the question is, is making sure that they understand what it is we want to have them bring back in a month or two, because otherwise they'll come back and they won't answer the right questions. So I, so I don't know, Sam, I mean, can staff get with the applicant and sort out the, the key issues that came up tonight, like with power and fire suppression, water, maybe have an opportunity to get with the Armstrongs, so that those two large developments kind of sync up? And, um, and I think if you think through these issues in greater detail with us, then it'll go easier on you when you go to the board supervisors, assuming that the, the rezoning gets there.
Yes.
Um, so I agree with my fellow commissioners here. Um, there, there's too many unanswered questions, um, to be able to make a decision on that. You know, I'm looking at, um, a letter here from Mr. Howard, um, requesting the preliminary plan for, um, water and sewer utilities. As far as we are aware, we still don't have that. Uh, Mr. Perryman, in his, um, email here, um, what is the maximum footprint expected to be on the roof, twenty percent, fifty percent? Um, and there's several other questions in there. I would be in favor of tabling this to give you guys some time to answer the questions. You can watch the video and get transcripts of tonight for all the questions that were asked. Um, and I feel that that is completely appropriate for y'all to do that, for us not to do your homework for you. We've asked the questions, it's your job to do the homework and come back with the answers.
Hold on one second, let me, go ahead. Did you have?
I don't think I said it.
Turn it on. He told me to. Nate? Good. Let me, um, get finished with the questions.
I appreciate it. Thanks for calling me last.
[laughing]
It's all good. Um, we wanna be good stewards of Coal Pepper. That's what, you know, you guys mentioned community, and you, and, and don't, please don't take this as disrespectful, but when you, you know, you throw out, "Stay at time", you know, we, we kind of not see through that, but we understand. You wanna come here, you wanna kinda, you know, talk to our people, you gotta stay somewhere, we get that. Um, this is our land, this is our county, and this is, um, you know, when we look at, and I don't think we got the full explanation of Arroyo, I think we were gonna delve into that, and that kind of got glossed over a little. But our county flow is full of agriculture, and we're taking that away if we build this. I do know that is a, uh, technology zone, and I know a data center is going there. It's just, as what Mr. Price alluded to, how do we get there? How do we get there is full transparency, uh, answering questions that would have great impact on our community, and I'm just, I have a concern with some of the questions. I don't think, um, you would operate, and, and it will at all, but I think we do need some, uh, questions answered. I think you're a great applicant, personally, I, I like the presentation, uh, but we are traffic studies, water, uh, a commitment from RAC, there's a lot of questions for me that I just don't feel easy on. But presentation was fine, your building looks great, um, hopefully it does look like that, and, uh, if it is approved, ever. Um, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. You're okay until you got ready to den. Ever, he said, if, if. But I do want to ask the, um, mention to, to the staff now, some of these, um, questions that have been asked, um, other than feeling like we just wanna kick 'em down the road and, you know, um, because you never get an answer until you actually do it. Some of these, um, whether it's VDOT or the water, um, those types of studies take, I mean, wha- what is that, isn't it through the process? Normally we get that, but now this time we want it up front, right? So how long does that process normally take, instead of us saying, you know, thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, to, um, so what, what do we, we've had other applicants that come in, and these things have happened, you know, quickly, to get that information.
Ms. Chairman, just to kind of answer your, your days question, uh, you know, the, the code does allow the planning commission, uh, to defer action, um, up to sixty days from tonight. Um, that's all you get. Beyond that, the, uh, you'd have to get agreement from the applicant. So you do have that, do you have that ability? This type of application from a traffic standpoint is not required to do at TIA. Um, they've done a traffic study, it does not hit the traffic numbers that would require a full-blown TIA. So they do not have one, or code doesn't require that. Across the street, a lot closer to that point, you're looking at a lot more traffic with that proposal, so that's why the scenario is a little bit different there. Wanted to explain that. They've done a traffic impact analysis, their traffic impact analysis actually has taken into account this development, um, so there has been one done, it's actually been with that project, um, but not this project. Um, you know, there are some things I'm sure the applicant could probably try to get better clarification on within thirty to sixty days. The power question, I don't know. Um, that's, that's a tough one. Um, you know, Dominion came just last week to the board supervisors, authorities from Dominion, and they explained the current position, and I think that's what we're at, where we're at right now, and I think that's the answer that, that they're gonna get to, so. Just wanted to throw that out there. Some of the other things, yeah, they probably could work on.
So when it comes to the power end of it, with us, what, what do we have to say about, you know, where are they gonna get that power from?
Right.
That, that's not really up to us, is it?
No, it's not. I mean, we, we have, we do, we can involve ourselves in the discussion, you know, for, for obviously, for new substation, uh, potential new line, potential Dominion engages their stakeholders, and the county certainly is a large stakeholder, um, you know, and the individual landowners are stakeholders. They engage all those, those parties the best they can, uh, but at the end of the day, when it comes to transmission lines, they're gonna do their studies, they're gonna propose alternative routes or a couple routes, and then the SDC is gonna determine that the public need exists, and that's the route that's the best.
And if they don't get it, get power for some reason, then that's not our decision, and that didn't impact us.
And that, like, we have set the stage with planning exercises.
Right.
You know, for this area to be chosen, in that respect, I believe the county has mitigated, you know, the need for extra power lines, because we have consolidated, and the board is actually taking another step to potentially consolidate the tech zones even further than what they are today, so.
And that's, uh, the reason I ask that question is, is because when we get to, um, thirty days or sixty days, and, and, and I can understand the commissioner's, um, concerns, um, you know, here too, and want to, um, the things that we can address and get more information on, then we can, you know, give them some time, but, um, if they can't get the information in thirty days, it's not like sixty days is gonna, you know, impact. Um, that's it, what we can get in thirty days is about the same we're gonna be able to get in the sixty days, because when it comes to power, either you, you can get it or you can't get it, and, um, and that part is not up to us, um, or the applicant, you know, at that particular, um, point, so. But I just wanted to, um, you know, get a, a feel of, of that, but, um, the maximum you say is, is sixty?
Is sixty days, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other?
I have one question for staff. So, correct me if I'm wrong here, if, let's say, if this was to be, the rezoning was to be approved, that rezoning would stay with that property for its lifetime? So if they can't get power and they never build, what's done is done?
If it's approved, it would, and then it would be in accordance with every, whatever proffer statement that the board may accept.
Right. But I'm saying, if, if they never build and somebody else would come in, that zoning is gonna stay with that property?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And they, and they would still have to comply with everything that is attached.
With those proffers.
Yeah, they still would have to, they wouldn't go away.
And the proffers are very limiting as far as use right now, that limits pretty much to the data center use.
Yeah.
That's right. I was just gonna make the comment that the proffer says it, it will always has, it has to be a data center. These guys don't build it, somebody else will.
Right, 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 right. Okay. All right. Anyone? Any other discussion? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that case Z dash four, five, nine, dash two, three, dash one be tabled sixty days, um, so that there is sufficient time for the applicant to address the questions that were raised tonight.
Hold on one second. Yes. Oh.
Second.
So we have, um, a motion, we have a second, um, any other discussion?
Ms. Chairman, I guess there is the point about whether or not there's a difference between thirty days and sixty days.
Yes.
If they can get what information they could be reasonably expected to get in thirty days, I mean, maybe, I don't know, may, maybe we ask them to come back when they think they've got the answers, as opposed to, um, establishing sixty days.
Yeah, I would, um, agree with that, and I was thinking more if, um, you know, we see if, um, these, um, um, the answers that we're looking for, the questions and all of that, you know, we can get those done in thirty days, that's what I was, um, you know, thinking there too, so. Any other discussion?
Are we gonna have an applicant to comment?
Not yet. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, can, can we not ask the applicant what might be better for them?
Yes. You go ahead, and, um, where were you getting ready? Were you getting ready to ask the question?
No.
That was the question.
Yeah, I'm asking you.
Okay. All right. Um, we do, um, have a motion. Well, you know what, we need to go ahead and, um, and vote on this. Robert Ruas is gonna have us to carry this out, so then we can, you know, afterwards. So if we voted down, then we can, you know, um, open that and do it from there. Um, there's a motion on the floor, and a second, any other discussion? Then, then all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Okay. All right. What was that?
Four, three, carried.
Okay.
I have the, uh, Mr. Clancy, Mr. Reeves, and Mr. Price were opposed.
Okay. All right. Okay. Go ahead.
So just a question, so, so we just, we just approve a sixty-day table?
That's right.
But if the applicant wants to come back in thirty?
No, that don't work.
That doesn't work?
No.
Okay. It's sixty days.
It'll, it'll come back at your, it'll be set to come back at your November regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, the motion's been carried. We'll send it forward to the board with the recommendation, um, no, that's right, we table it, we're table it, okay? We, I got it, I got it, I got it. But we'll table it for a period of, um, sixty days, okay? All right. Okay. That concludes our new business, and at this, um, time, um, Sam, um, staff, do you have anything else for us?
No, Ms. Chairman, that's all we have tonight.
Okay. All right. Fully triggered?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Meeting is adjourned.